At this time, we will call the November the seventeenth, twenty twenty-five Walton County's Honoring Board of Judgment Order. If you would, please stand as we have our invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Charlie, if you would.
Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity to live in this great nation and this great county. Please guide us and watch over us here tonight to do what's best for our county and our citizens. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. This is our meeting before Thanksgiving. On behalf of the board, we wish each and everyone a happy Thanksgiving next week and safe holidays and give thanks for what the good Lord has provided us. We do appreciate the board members that's here. Mr. Rush had a crisis to come up. He's not with us tonight. We have six out of seven. We will give each and every person our opportunity to postpone this. If you want a full board to the next meeting, then we will do everything we can to make that happen. We'd like to thank Karen for her being here tonight. We appreciate our law enforcement. As always, we do have a good attorney tonight, Ms. Rutherford. Is that correct? She's filling in for Mr. Hayward Dice, and we appreciate her being here. Are there any announcements that need to be made?
Not from legal, no.
You gonna do the swearing in?
Yes, sir, if you're ready.
Everyone that's planning to speak before this board tonight, please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn.
Do you all swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
First item on the agenda is, uh...
Curry, Vern.
Mr. Curry, we have six out of seven. Come up and state your name for the record, please.
Dan Curry, C-U-R-R-Y.
We have six out of seven. Would you like to have yours postponed to the next meeting so we can have seven?
I think with the position that I'm in, I would prefer a full board, so then there's no question of one way or the other, if that's okay with everybody else.
We have a motion to postpone this to the December fifteenth meeting. Is that correct, Karen? Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue it to the December fifteenth.
Beckett? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In December?
I just have one question with the codes and the notifications. Do I have to reschedule out mailers? Do I?
Right. You do not have to take a reschedule, and the code will not have any fines issued until we hear the case. And we're gonna have discussion tonight. I forgot, uh, there's an issue that we heard back in May. The process has been different than what I'm used to in the past, so we do have some people here that is gonna take and discuss some issues. So at the end of the meeting, when we get through, we're gonna discuss what this board does and as far as issuing could, can't, but we'll have some discussion on that. But no, you're good. Just come back on December. If you hang on just one second, we have a motion and a second, and we voted. Is that correct? I will give you the opportunity to come up. Come on up. State your name for the record.
My name is Joseph Cope.
Joseph who?
I won't get into the whole spiel since y'all aren't for real here tonight. That's fine.
What do you have to say?
So with that notification letter that was stated, I have a copy of it here. It was left in my mailbox, so when I did receive that, I did kinda look at that. It's vague. It doesn't tell you anything about this variance that's being requested. If y'all did see the copy, I don't know if y'all received them. I have a copy here, but it just says a variance.
Is a notice the issue according to the law that is required for us to issue? That's the standard one that we send out.
Okay, 'cause I've been through three of these already. I've got one for myself as well, and I've never seen one that does not tell you what they're asking a variance for. It says a variance project, and it has very basic and lies inside of it, stating that there is Oak Place Drive is a private road. I have all the information here from our own websites in Walton County saying it's not private, so it's lying in there about that. And then it also does not state what the variance is for at all.
Okay. Mr. By, would you state on the record what is required by law for that notice to say?
Notification of the project number, the date, the location of the meeting, a narrative letter, and the cover letter.
And that's what's required by law?
What is the narrative of this supposed to be? Because it doesn't...
Requesting a variance and where it is.
So it basically states his address. When we turned in our objection for this, they didn't even know how to find it at the...
It was turned in and it was put into your action letter was received and...
We have a copy of your objection.
Charlie, stay on.
I'm just saying there was confusion based off of they did not know anything about this. We gave them the address. They asked for parcel IDs. None of that's on here. The three other on Shoreline Drive where we lived, they had a variance across the street. There's another variance going right now for the house behind that. Every one detail tells you, hey, we're trying to change the seven and a half setback to a six because our building is inside that. None of this states anything like that. When you get this, you do not know what they're trying to change. You don't know why they're trying to change it. You don't know the driveway is sixty foot of driveway, which is twenty. You don't know anything.
Mr. Cope, we will have our legal staff take a review, and if it's not in compliance, then we will make sure that it's nailed up.
I'd appreciate that, because I think there's a lot of questions.
We're gonna have our attorney to look at it and make recommendations that it's done properly.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cope, and appreciate your comment.
See y'all on the fifteenth.
Yes, sir. What's the next item on the agenda? Valor Communication LLC. Who's here to represent that?
Good evening. My name is Darryl Burgess. I am a registered land surveyor with GeoPoint Surveying here in Freeport. We are, we made application on behalf of Valor Communities for this variance.
Tell us what you're looking for tonight.
Okay, through a...
Do y'all need a surveyor?
No, we have a very competent surveyor here who, his only fault in this is issuing a very accurate survey.
Hang on a minute. I thought we voted on the continue.
No, did he want to continue?
Yes. We've got six out of seven. Do you want us to hear it? You want to continue?
Let's hear it, please.
Thank you, Charlie. All right, go ahead, Mr. Burgess.
Well, through a series of some architectural, a little bit of surveying, and apparently the concrete construction crew made an adjustment in the field, we come before you this evening requesting a variance to the rear and one side and a front setback. I have for you...
Is this structure in?
It is at the framing stage of construction. We discovered this in the course of our foundation survey for a, in the course of the building permit.
Has the foundation been poured?
Yes, sir.
So the foundation is poured, and that's when you found out that there's an encroachment?
Correct.
And the encroachment that you're looking for on the, let's take this side button one at a time, front yard setback variance, you asking twenty feet to nineteen point seven feet, which is a five inch. Is that correct?
Nineteen point seven. That is correct, and converting from feet to inches, that might be about four inches, three tenths of a foot.
Four inches, and that's one that's facing the road. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Hidden highway, right?
Correct.
And the north side is seven point five to, you only asking for one inch. Is that correct?
One tenth of a foot, which is a little more than an inch from seven point five to seven point four on the side setback, which is the north boundary.
But it's less than two inches.
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, and what's the rear setback is fourteen to fourteen point six feet?
I made a bit of a mistake in my application there. We really need to request it be reduced from fifteen feet to fourteen point five. You can see on the survey, at the very northwest corner, it is a dimension of fourteen point five. So a half, a half a foot is the worst-case scenario.
The existing concrete porch. Now, what is this for?
This is a single-family residence in a...
Family residence.
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead with your request.
Well, the we, if you can look at, I think was included in the packet, was the original, was the plot plan where we calculated the position of the house on the lot in the course of construction. And like I say, apparently, as best we can determine in the course of the concrete foundation construction, believing that they, that there was enough room. Originally, it was fifteen point four in the rear on one of the rear ties. It looks as though the house was, they tried to rotate it and scoot it a little bit to adhere to the front setback. Probably could have been accomplished, but it just didn't happen exactly right in the field.
Did y'all lay the house out?
GeoPoint did lay the house out, yes, but it is not built where we laid it out.
So the subcontractors for the slab moved their footers over, correct?
That is, to the best of our determination, what most likely happened. Yes, sir.
But now, on the rear setback, on one corner, you at fifteen point one, and up at the existing concrete floor porch, you at fourteen point five.
Yes, sir.
So they moved it just six inches.
Or just, yes, just under that.
Just under six.
Believing that they had room and the actual, it's fifteen point one even at present because it's in a curve.
And they rotated it.
They did a little bit of a rotation and a slide.
And then on the, I guess that's the north boundary line, they was right on the seven point five, but they just went seven point four, one inch on that one boundary line.
Yes, sir.
And they had plenty of room, twelve point eight. But this has done have been poured, right?
It is, and there should be photos in your packet. If not, I actually took more this morning to demonstrate that there has been no construction activity since discovery.
And there's one corner is nineteen point seven. Any questions, Chris? Y'all have any questions?
I've got one question. How was it discovered?
In, when we performed the foundation survey, which is also, should be included in your packet, that's when the issue was brought to light. And Mr. Johnson is looking at our foundation survey in question, so...
Did you do the foundation survey after you already started building the house?
Yes, sir. The framing was started, which is customary. Your foundation survey is required for a framing inspection, but not necessarily to go vertical. So, yes, we did discover this, and like I say, well...
It seems like we're seeing more of these, and I would think that the industry would start, would stop building houses until the survey's done on the slab, but that's just my thought.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so on three sides, you need a four-inch, a one-inch, and a six-inch variance. Does that mean on the fourth side, you've got an increased setback?
Yes, ma'am. We have clearance. Uh, well, there was always a little bit of extra clearance, but you, on the south boundary, which is a side setback, it exceeds the seven point five in both instances.
By how much? I'm just curious.
Seven point seven is the closest, so I have two tenths of a foot is about three inches, and then twelve point eight far exceeds the seven and a half.
I sort of have the same concern that Chris brought up about, you know, it's only one, one inch, six inches, four inches, but it's a point eleven acre lot, so there's not a lot of room for mistakes on that. And there's, I'm guessing there's no other... Is this the first home that's built there? There's no others, or is it...
No, there are others in the subdivision, maybe not in this particular phase, but I don't think this is the first in this phase, but it's one of, one of the first.
So is it, is there an HOA? Do they have an opinion? Any of the neighbors say anything about this?
We, to my knowledge, have had no objection. I would like to point out that it's common area on the rear setback, so it's not adjacent to another lot. I don't know. I would ask Mr. Beranti if there have been any letters of objection or emails. Okay, so to the best of my knowledge and through our office, no objections or in the neighborhood.
Explain the common area in the rear.
That it's homeowners, it's owned by the homeowners association. I'm not exactly sure of the proposed use, be it recreation, stormwater, or the like, but it's not setback to setback or a common lot line between two residences.
And that's the most egregious one, like the...
Yes, the rear setback is.
So the rest of them.
Okay, and this is...
Hang on a minute. State your name for the record.
Mark Johnson. I'm with Valor Communities. I'm the division president for Valor Communities. I just wanted to state that you were asking about the HOA, and the actual developer who owns the property has given consent, and if he needs, if we need a letter or anything from him, he's perfectly okay to do so. I just talked with him again this afternoon before coming.
Uh, but what is, who are you?
I'm Mark Johnson, the Valor Communities Division President.
So you're responsible for this community?
I'm not responsible for the entire community. We bought roughly forty-something lots in this neighborhood, and the ones that are around this particular issue are ours.
So this is your house?
Our house, yes.
Have you had issues before with your subcontracting on, on, on concrete?
This is the first issue we've had here in Florida.
I mean, houses have you built?
Probably built about a hundred plus so far.
And this is your first time having an issue? Do you have any idea how they did it?
My guess is just sometimes forms will shift when guys are laying out strings or a stake gets moved. It just happens. It's happened in other areas that we've built into, not here, but in other markets.
Since you volunteered to come up, is there, or how can you guarantee this board that this will not happen again? I mean, are you gonna have prayer meeting with your subcontractors?
We do that every morning.
Well, now, you know, I'm not speaking on behalf of this board, but should there be a, like granting of variance this time? If you come back, you probably don't need to come back. Well, let me ask you this. Since you have forty, or you build a bunch of houses, the concern of the board is, can't you get that slab survey before you start construction?
Before we go vertical?
Yes. And if this board so chooses to put that in the ordinance or our, our, if it should have passed and it added to it, you have no problem with that? Any questions?
Well, I don't know if we can ask this, but it seems like it wouldn't hurt to say in that the larger area to put in more vegetation, something that's going to mitigate that difference in setback. And I know it's, it's not much, but it just seems like there needs to be...
You don't have a problem with her request, do you?
Uh, are you talking about on the lot or in the common space? Because there's actually going to be some more shrubbery and trees, I think, in that common area that the developer's gonna be putting in.
Where do you want it, Ms. Mark?
It just seems like whoever made the mistake, there needs to be some skin in the game for them. There needs to be some kind of consequence, and, you know, if it's the six-inch setback that's, and it's not the common area, but whatever area is going to, you know, maybe give some, um, some buffer for the neighbors or something. I think vegetation would work better for us, for our purposes.
I know the problem with vegetation, be added to the variance if it was to be granted, would you? It's cheaper by vegetation than it is there in the house now.
Most definitely.
Okay. We appreciate you agreeing to that. Thank you. Mr. Chris, I mean, Burgess, you have any other?
Well, I will say that the, there was a little bit of ambiguity on one dimension in the southeast corner that probably led to this as well. And to answer one point or question you posed, yes, we've gone back with the architectural group. We've clarified this. We've taken measure to make sure this does not happen in the future again with this or any other of the models going in.
Always falls on the architect, right? They just, they come, must have been on a Monday. Thank you.
Right.
So I just wanted to point out that in the, yeah, we're an easy target, the architects.
I thought we were the target.
I did notice in the digital files that were sent out before the meeting that you had the, the plot plan prior to the foundation being installed, but it is, it is not in the printed packet. There's two copies of the foundation survey, and so I just wanted everybody to see or to know that the floor plan appears to have fit within the setbacks prior to construction having commenced. And through whatever happened in the field, we're talking about, you know, a two-inch encroachment into that side setback through the process of laying concrete, which in my opinion is, is unfortunate, but it's, it's very minimal.
Should be within the, what do you call it, the percentage of error? It should be a... You should be laying.
Unfortunately, our, our code doesn't. That's why we're here. Um, but yeah, I just wanted to draw everybody's attention to the fact that they went into it with a plot plan that showed this structure fitting inside the setback. So there was no intention of this thing spilling over.
I agree with that.
It was not, and this is not an overreach. We're not increasing the square footage. We're building the same house that was permitted, the same square footage, et cetera.
Very awkwardly shaped lot. There's curving points, and so if guys are trying to pull a tape to a, uh, property line that's, that's angling, I, I can see how that mistake could have been made after your stakes went in.
Well, I do believe it's an innocent construction mistake.
Have a seat. You get to come back. Mr. Bob?
Chair, good evening. The request is approval of variance from section five point zero, zero point zero three of the Walton County Land Development Code to reduce the front yard setback variance of twenty feet, from the twenty feet to nineteen point seven feet, and of, which would be a variance of approximately five inches. The northern side yard setback from seven point five feet to four point one feet, a variance of approximately an inch. The application is also requesting a rear yard setback from fifteen feet to fourteen, as he corrected, fourteen point five feet. And staff finding unless other evidence is presented to the contrary, the requested variance does not appear to satisfy the minimum requirements of section one point one six point zero three of the Land Development Code.
May I enter staff report in the record, please?
Enter.
Do you have any questions for me before I sit down, Mr. Chair?
I don't. Any questions?
And like I said, there were no, there were no public comment, letters received or calls either way.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Chair.
Anyone would like to speak in regards to this variance? Anyone for it? Anyone against it? Mr. Burgess, you wanna make any comments? You think you're in pretty good shape? Motion closed at public discussion.
Motion enclosed, public discussion.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve it with the stipulation that he had changed it to fourteen point five, where it was, I believe it was, I think he had fourteen, something else.
Fourteen point six.
Yeah, he went from six to five. Would that change? I would make a motion to approve.
You gonna add what Ms. Margaret wanted to add to it?
I wasn't going to. I, I thought it was, I thought it was minimal, but just based on the fact that it already fits within the floor plan and the footprint. He's not changing or expanding the size of the building.
It wouldn't hurt to add it, though, would it?
The common area back there anyway. It wouldn't hurt to. I'm not opposed to it, but I was not going to, originally going to.
I would think that it needed to be added. We discussed it. He's agreed to do it on the record. I think as long as he agreed to do it on the record, any part of the record, the record is that he was adding, uh, Miss Margaret helped me out here, that he would add vegetation to the, to the side that is, that is affected by the variance. And also that, that further, further, uh, construction before they start to vertical, they would have the slab survey. That's what he, he, he agreed to do. And on behalf of that builder, I think that needed to be added to it.
Okay, I'll add those two conditions.
Mr. Bob? You got it, Karen? Now we have the motion. Everyone understand it? Second? Discussion. Go ahead. You second it? You discuss it?
Um, I'm good with everything we've discussed.
Chris?
I just think that, you know, some greater supervision in the field could avoid these things. So I just hope that that's something that the industry can, can take on board, uh, because it's just something that continues to happen.
Joe? Oh, I, I do have a little bit of concern about requiring an additional quote unquote landscape buffer. What is it? What kind of plant material is it? How wide is that buffer going to be? I don't feel that it's, it's necessary for as minimal as the encroachment was in the side setback or to deviate from all the other houses that will be built in the neighborhood. So I was in agreement with Charlie that, that the additional landscaping buffer, as it's so difficult to define at this point, what is an additional landscape buffer? One oak tree? Is it a hedge of wax myrtle? Is it fourteen magnolia trees? You know, it just, I think it's really hard to quantify for us to go back and, and say, did they in fact put additional landscaping there?
I, I agree, but it, I think it's also just a little skin in the game that you made a mistake and there's something that needs to be done. And it, it doesn't need to be quantified. I think they can use their own judgment of what they think would be appropriate. And I think that they would do a nice, whatever they think is, is appropriate. So I don't think it's appropriate for us to really say you need to do X or Y, but there needs to be some, in my opinion, skin in the game for making, and, and it's a little mistake, and, and you're right, it's so easy. I mean, we've all made those little one, two inches, whatever. Um, but I just, the one offs is, is what I just think that they have enough sense to know what they think would be appropriate.
They agreed to, if he, they probably agreed to it, and there again, it's better than tearing the house down. I think that it shows that we're trying to work with both sides. We're trying to work with the builder that in this world today, I said it before, to get people to show up to work is one thing, get people to show up to work and does a good job is another thing. So, you know, there's mistakes happening because you just don't have the work ethic that we used to have. And unfortunately, we see that more than what we used to. But there again, I think that's a trade off that he's agreed to. And I think he's trying to work with us, and he's trying to work with the request of the board, and I think it's just a win-win situation.
Okay.
Charlie?
I'm sympathetic to it to see how, how it could happen. I mean, I, I, it was a minimal mistake. I don't think it was done intentionally at all, and it's a landscape buffer is just, you know, very much at his own discretion. I have no problems with it or anything like that.
Thank you. Ms. Margaret?
Fine with me.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Do you vote aye?
I want to vote nay.
Thought so. We have five, five to one. You, you receive your variance. Just barely. We appreciate you coming tonight. We appreciate you speaking. We appreciate you being willing to help with the board to make decisions that you will make sure this doesn't happen again. If you need to get a good survey, we might be able to recommend one for you, right? What's on the next agenda? Next item on the agenda is the fault. Is that right? Who's, Mr. Fault? You wanna come up and state your name for the record?
It's Neil Infault.
Neil Infault?
Yes, sir.
What can we do for you tonight?
Um, I'm seeking a variance to, to start. I'm, I'm building a home for my wife and family as an owner builder. Realize that building a house is a lot harder than I thought it would. I knew I was gonna make some mistakes, and I made a big one. So I, um, had my foundation crew come out, and they staked out my house. I, I gave them like my site plan, everything. They looked like they knew what they were doing, brought out the lasers and everything. Uh, I looked at it, and I was like, that looks right to me, 'cause I don't know how to stake out a home. Um, and, uh, we got through, they did a great job with the slab. Went vertical with my framing. Um, planning department had me do a foundation survey, which I should have done earlier. And then, um, found out that I'm three foot too close to the road on one of my corners of the, the front house.
Three foot or four foot?
It's, uh, I'm at sixteen foot eight, um, and I, I believe it needs to be twenty feet, so it's, uh, uh, three foot four.
Bad news for you. The front porch on the drawings is included in that setback.
Is it?
So the dimension that was given on the survey is to the corner of the house, but then the concrete pad for the front porch, that would eventually have the columns and the roof over it,
Understood.
Would cause the variance to be even greater than the one that you've asked for. So I just wanted to point that out, um, that it's not actually a three point two foot variant. It's a, uh, that leg of the torches is five feet. So you're asking for an eight point two foot.
Understood.
Can that not be built? Is it already built?
Yes, it was a very late mistake. Uh, the, the porch is not built, no, ma'am. So, uh, right now it's a, a concrete slab, um, and then, um, I don't have the overhang built on it yet.
So theoretically, that could be pulled up, just that?
Yes.
Without damaging the rest?
Correct.
There was something else I noticed on the survey about the flood zone that you're in is eighty-eight. So your slab for your first floor is supposed to be at nine feet, and this survey says it's at seven point four feet. So you're one point six feet below the flood zone?
That was another issue that we're working on a fix for. Uh, we wanted to work on the variance first and, and figure that out, and then we have a, a idea on how to raise up the, the floor to code.
Are you just gonna shorten the ceiling height and?
Yes, sir. It was a, not a very good day.
Mr. Bob? Come up. I'm gonna ask you a question. Year after year after year, you know, it gets more complicated to build a house. It takes longer to get through the planning process. We used not have to get surveys on the foundation. Now we have to get foundations to stake the house. We have to have several surveys. And the planning department is difficult to work with. And then y'all, y'all require a foundation, but yet y'all allow them to go vertical before they get the foundation. Help me understand that.
Um, our BPR manager's here. She.
Your who manager?
Uh, the Walton County BPR manager and flood.
County manager?
Building, building permit, right? You wanna swear, ma'am?
State your name for the record.
My name is Donnie Sway.
Wherein?
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, now what do you do?
I am the building plans review manager, which is the site plan review for anything that comes in for a BPR, to get approval for the site plan, flood zone, wildlife lighting, all of those issues before it goes for construction permits to the building department. So my team reviews those submittals, and once it is approved from us, from that site plan, it is shipped off to the building department. And then the building department reviews it for construction permits, and then issues their construction permit, so they can get started on the job.
Is the final phase of the planning department, is that correct?
Not necessarily a final phase, but an integral part.
Before it goes to building?
Yes, so we are the ones that put the requirements on there for foundation surveys, for stormwater letters, for parking requirements, for wildlife lighting, for doom buffer preservation. Those items are looked at under my team.
Well, tell, tell me, how does it continue to happen that the foundation survey does not get done until the house is dried in?
Well, when they are submitted in for the planning review in the beginning, they have a site plan that is supposed to have all of those items marked on there. Once that has been reviewed and approved, then that packet is sent on to the building department. At that point, the building department has their review and a schedule of inspections that they are required. Now, our planning requirements get coupled in with the building department's requirements for them during that construction program. So when they go out and set their footers, and they are going to pour their foundation, do their stem wall, whatever their foundation system is made of, they have a finished floor elevation that they have to meet as part of planning, whether it be a flood zone, one foot above for stormwater, or they have a master stormwater plan. So that finished floor elevation has to be met. In his particular case, you're north of the bay?
Yes.
So he doesn't have a stormwater requirement that he would have to meet other than the Blanket County Stormwater Plan that meets one foot above the finished floor. He is in a flood zone, so he has to meet that one foot above the base flood elevation, the design flood elevation, which you're supposed to come in at nine?
Yes.
Okay, so roughly his nine feet, that has to show on that foundation survey. That foundation survey, once they get that foundation in, surveyor goes out, does all their measurements, they send that document back, is turned in to the planning department. Meanwhile, there is no mechanism to keep that builder from building. They keep going. It's supposed to be a hard stop. But they precede their own risk.
It's supposed to be a hard stop.
They are not supposed to start vertical construction until that foundation survey has been approved.
Is that, is that in any documentation? Do they sign any agreement, any documentation to that effect?
Well, not on the planning side. And there is a schedule of inspections on the building department side that they will not allow them to schedule any inspections for framing to move forward with vertical construction until they receive the approval from planning on the foundation.
But there's about a three or a four week delay from getting the survey work done on the foundation when it's completed. Most people don't wanna sit idle for a month waiting for the surveyor to turn in the.
Cause you lose your crews, you lose your schedule, you lose everything.
I will say, Donnie rakes us over the coals when we submit plans to planning. We are held to a very high standard to get the building permits and everything done. So I, I know when they leave the planning department, that all the ducks and everything are in a row.
We don't wanna make the process any more difficult or time consuming that, but we've had two cases tonight where this is not, you know, it's not being caught until they get the vertical done, and that is a, is a concern.
And that's not just this jurisdiction. That's across the board for everyone because of the time constraints. And whether it be a homeowner build or a contractor build, um, you know, the contractor that was here before, they have all kinds of crews that they're gonna be moving from site to site to site. So, I mean, there's, there's always that timing element.
A foundation survey is not even required on over an acre, if you have over an acre, still?
Partly. So rule of thumb is, if it is more than an acre in size, and they're more than double the what the setbacks are, and no environmental issues, floods on wetlands, any of that, then that foundation survey can be forgiven.
You said something, you said something, I think was very key. You said preceded, they preceded their own risk.
Correct.
And what is the risk? What's happening right now?
For the board, tear it down?
What happened on the last case?
That's correct.
So the industry should know what the risk is.
And a lot of them do. A lot of them do. Homeowner builders, um, kinda get lost in the sauce a little bit, but the contractors and crews are, it's industry standard.
How much rear setback do you have? Most of rear setback?
Fifteen point three right now. What he would have to do, or would have had to have done, would be rotate it to the right. And like twist it. He twisted it down, it would fit.
Yeah, I mean, there's plenty of room on the site for that structure to fit.
It's a large, large lot, smaller house.
How much is he asking for?
Yeah, I could have done a fifteen thousand square foot house on this piece.
How much is he asking for, eight feet?
Well, I think the variance now should. Well, I think the variance now should read. At a sixteen point eight, it should say eleven point eight, so that variance would be eight point two feet.
Or we could not grant him the variance for the porch.
Well, no porch, eight point three point two.
Go, go ahead.
Um, to, to answer your question, it absolutely could've fit on the, the property, um, if it would've been staked out differently. Uh, the, the problem that I'm at now is everything, it's close to being dried in. And to tear it down and restart would be astronomically expensive. Um, and so, I'm trying to find.
Do you do for a living?
Pardon me?
What do you do for a living?
Um, I work in the reconstruction phase, uh.
What do you mean reconstruction?
We, uh, I, I work with a rebuilders group. We, uh, um, when buildings are in disrepair, a lot of times we'll go and we'll fix them and bring them back.
You're familiar with, with, uh, construction work?
To some extent, yes, sir.
Familiar with surveying?
I've learned a lot on this project.
But you knew a lot before you came to this project, is that correct?
I've done some, um, the, the, building a house, uh, I, I, I thought with having some, uh, knowledge and experience in construction. It would be easier than what it has been.
I understand that, but were you aware that when you, uh, laid the house out, were you aware where your house, did you measure it? Did you understand when they put the forms in, you're familiar with construction?
Yes, sir.
Did you measure it? Did you measure the distance from the, your, your footer to your bound- boundary, did you measure that?
I did not.
You did not?
My, um, I had my foundation crew do it, um, and, and stake everything out, and then it's, it's ultimately.
Who's your foundation crew? Is that part of your organization?
No, sir, I was a subcontractor, M and M Concrete, it was, uh, Hispanic subcontractor.
Anyone has any questions? Have a seat, we'd set up, you didn't have a seat up front. Have a seat up front, you're gonna get to come back. Mister Bob?
The request is approval variance from section five point zero zero point zero three of the Walton County Land Development Code. To reduce the front yard setback of twenty feet to the sixteen point eight feet variance. And it would be approximately a four foot, four inch variance. It's because of the, the, the e- the right of way easement. So, in the code, the right of way easements start at the far end of the end of the right of way.
I say that again, but Mister Bob?
Okay, so if you have a utility easement, the utility easement starts on the, so the house is here, a utility easement's here. It starts on this side and includes the utility easement. But a right of way easement starts on this side and goes in. So, this is why he's out, he's. Out of that.
But he's a right of way easement.
It's shown on the survey where his. Yeah.
Sixty feet.
But it, but it starts at his close end, not the far end. And that's the only easement in the, um, code that's measured that way.
Say that again.
You have, just say it's a utility easement.
I'm not worried about the utility.
I'm, well, I'm trying to expla- explain so you can, you have the utility easement. You start from this far side, it includes into that easement. And then the setback is encompassed. But a right of way easement starts on the far side, the closer side, and goes in. So, that's why, because he's got, they mis-measured with that right of way easement. And that's where he's gotten the, if you look on his survey, that's where they've gotten. He's, if it was the other way, he would have plenty from the edge of the right of way. But he doesn't because of it's the closest point in. So, that's where his, you, that dark line is the start of his, his setback line.
And it goes in there towards his house.
Correct.
Yeah, so there, it's a dip.
Yeah.
So, on one end, it's seventeen, and on the other end, it's twenty-one.
Correct.
And in the middle, it's twenty-six.
Yes, but he only got it on that one corner.
Who did the survey?
Um. Yeah, Gus and Cock and Tucker.
Did they also do the stakeout? So, yeah, if you'd have connected those lines straight across, no variant.
Who's to say that the survey correct when you look at it? I mean, that road, is that a county dedicated road?
Um, I believe, I believe the Beechers Point Road is a public, is the public road.
A dedicated sixty foot right of way? I mean, is that, what subdivision is this then?
It is.
Shores.
Yeah, Cross Creek Shores.
That's a dead end street, isn't it? We need a sixty foot right of way on a dead end street?
Look at your survey, look at that. I mean, how, how can, how can you say this is the six, did he measure the sixty foot right of way?
Well, what, what Bob was saying is.
I know what Bob's saying.
But from here, sixty feet over is the right of way.
But why didn't he show that?
Well. I don't typically show the other side of the right of way on a survey. He's got the sixteen foot road on there, and then it's twenty-six feet from the road to the property line. Plus the sixteen feet, so this thing is forty some odd feet back off the road.
Correct.
The boundary line, is the boundary line the, the, uh, right of way, or is his boundary line?
His boundary line is the start of the setback.
So, his boundary line is not in the right of way?
No, sir, it's the far side, it, it's the closest side to the structures at the right of way.
You wanna enter your, your report?
Yes, Mister Chair.
Did you ever make a recommendation?
Uh, Mister Chair, but I will make it now. Um, as I said, approval of the variance of four, of approximately four feet, four inches.
Well, just hang on a minute. According to, uh, Jeff, this variance is incorrect.
Well, because, but he's not, he doesn't have that porch up yet. He's going to change the design of that porch to make that variance again. He's, he told you he was gonna redesign the porch.
Well.
Or if the boards wishes to add it.
You're good with the variance without the porch?
Yes, sir. If that's what I need to get a variance and keep, I mean, uh, minimal, then a- absolutely.
Okay. We're gonna give you a chance to speak in a minute, sir, just hang on. Mister Bob, anything else?
No, sir, may I enter staff report in the record, please?
Yes, sir, so enter.
And also, the, 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 um, Board of County Commissioner District is incorrect, it's District One.
Okay.
What's the zoning on this property, it, they, they?
It's rural village.
Rural village, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. You about to die to speak, come on up, state your name for the record. No, come on up and speak. You've been, you've been jumping up and down, come on. You think so? Come up, you get the file, wait a minute, anyone here has anything to say?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, sir, come up, state your name for the record.
Adam Siler.
Yes, sir. Nice to see you, Mister Siler.
Uh. I'm speaking in behalf of my wife and her sister because we have, she has land straight across the road. Beechers Point Road on, in the Cross Creek area. And we went over there yesterday and looking at it and everything. But I don't understand what this residential and mixed use is, the mixed use?
We're not here to discuss the mixed use, we're here to discuss the variance.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's on the paper. I mean, what are they gonna have, a, a car lot or?
No, no, all this is, is a residential.
I understand.
Residential house that he is asking for a variance, that's all he's asking for.
Okay.
The mixed use is a district area that, that is defined through the, the, uh, zoning in that area. If he wanna put a car wash on it, then there's a process that he would have to go through to see if he could put that. That has nothing to do with.
Yeah, well, that's what, that's what I just wanted to know.
All we hear tonight discuss is this house, says a residential house, and he's asking for a variance.
Yeah, well, I talked to the neighbor next door, and he was telling me what the problem was, you know.
Were you for this, you against it, you, do you mind a gentleman having his variance?
I don't care, I mean, I'm saying, I've seen the house, it's fine with me, you know, I just don't want. Being a junkyard, you know, behind.
No, 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 Lord, no, don't even, man, that, that takes an act of Congress in Walton County.
What I'm trying to find out?
Yes, sir, we appreciate you coming.
I can say I grew up with him and his room stayed much better than mine. I believe he'll keep his.
All right, we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep everything focused on the issue, Miss Barbara Morano?
Barbara Morano, just for the record, I informed Mister Bob that this was in the wrong district. He was not very amenable, friendly, or courteous. But he did come up here and tell you that it was in the wrong district, so I just wanna say that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. You have anything else to add? You asked, come up, come up. You're good with everything, you're not gonna build a porch on it, and you're good with everything, right?
Can I ask a quick question on the porch? Um, is there?
State your name for the record.
I'm sorry, I'm Michael.
Did you swear in?
I did not.
Okay, take your hat off and swear in.
You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
The, the porch structure, as it's in the plans, I think is just a poured slab. Is there anything that would suffice for that, uh, that wouldn't require variance, uh, pavers on the ground or anything like that? Or is anything permanent count as a structure or an encroachment on the?
The slab, as long as it's within twenty-four inches of grade, does not require a variance to be in the setback.
And if he didn't have columns, if he used brackets to support a roof as opposed to columns, would that encroach as well?
Roof is only allowed to encroach eighteen inches into the setback, so that would be an encroachment. And since we're already into the setback a considerable amount, then there would not be.
I understand, that's his front door, I'm just trying to help think through how he's gonna get in the house, so.
Yeah, I'm, it's not a good situation, but maybe when you're redoing the, the finished floor. You can recess that door back into the great room space three feet, so you can create a covered stoop.
Um, I, I guess, I mean, could I, if I don't, I'm, I'm fine not having like the roof and whatnot, could I at least have like steps going up to the? House, I imagine?
You can have steps.
Yeah, so the steps, you're allowed to have the slab and steps.
So, the slab can stay, I just can't put a roof on it?
Correct.
That's not an issue at all?
And I, if I were you, I would ask for the variance to be the full. Variance, so you could have a front porch.
That would be the question, if, if that's a deal breaker, I think that's what he's asking.
I think that.
If it's a deal breaker, he'll forego it, if it's not a deal breaker, I'm sure he'd much rather have his front porch.
Agreed.
Motion closed, favor discussion?
Motion. Second.
Second.
All favor, I?
Aye.
Motion?
Jeff make a motion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually. I would like to make a, a motion to grant the variance to the front porch. To be the, um, eleven point eight feet. So, that he can construct the porch on the front of his house. I do think that the sixty foot right of way is excessive. But it wasn't very long ago on Greaton Trail that a similarly shaped. Lot was granted a ten foot front setback. Prior to them designing the home, so that they could construct a reasonable sized house on that lot. And so, although this is an after the fact variance. It feels to me like a very similar situation, and, and it would be odd to have granted a ten foot variance in that case. And not be willing to allow an eleven. Point eight foot setback on the front of this one.
How much land was involved in that house that you represent? Was it a large lot, small lot?
It was a long lot, but it, it suffered from the setback being applied to the edge of the right of way.
But the lot size, I mean, was that in consideration that the lot was not large enough to build? Was that a big house they built, or was it a?
I mean, I don't remember. The lot was a little, little bit smaller, um, so they ended up putting a bigger house on that lot. This is a smaller house on a slightly bigger lot, but the. Situation is similar, you have, the front porch is more than forty feet away from the edge of the road. And.
On a.
If there's a motion, and if there's a second, and it doesn't pass. Then are we allowed to make a different motion with a, with a, with a? What has been requested?
Yes.
So, if there's a motion, a second doesn't pass, that is not final, there can be a second motion.
You can make a different motion.
Okay, restate your motion.
So, my, my motion is to allow him to keep the front porch due to the large distance from the road to the, to the front porch. And. I. Guess I don't say I'm in favor of the variance, I'm making the motion, so. My motion is to grant a variance to the front setback of eight point two.
Would you amend it to the surveyed area, not the whole lot?
The variance would be limited to the footprint of the existing structure.
I'll second that.
Let's start on this side, discussion?
I think it's unfortunate that, um, that right of way is seventeen on one end, twenty-one on the other end. And twenty-six in the center, right in front of your property, it seems to go in a V like that. Um, and I'm just wondering, i- is that? It just seems like, why would the right of way get, go like that, like a little pie shaped? And could that be changed so that he's not, I mean, it's unfortunate, and it's a large enough lot that they could've moved it. But, um. And I, I do agree with Jeff that as long as you're gonna get the variance, you might as well make the house look better. And that would be a more of a value to the neighborhood. As opposed to, you know, saying, no, you can't put on your porch, and it just looks like a funky house that's sitting out there, you know? I mean, who wants to live next door to that? So, I do agree, if, if we're gonna grant the variance, we might as well bite the bullet and do the whole variant. So, that it would make the house look nice, it, it's just unfortunate. And as in, you know, the last one, I feel like there needs to be some skin in the game. There needs to be some consequences for these one offs that happen, you know? And i- if that is doing some planning, or, you know, having some fines, there just, there needs to be one off. Because it's a terrible waste to tear a house down, I mean, you just don't wanna see that. And you don't, you know, there was a house I know by top sale where they had to cut off eighteen inches of the house, or whatever it was. And, and it's doable, but it's, it's. But it's, it's, it's counterproductive and it's wasteful. So, um, I, I'm just in a quandary, 'cause I, I think it's not okay, but at the same time, you know, denying it would cause more disruption and more, you know, waste, quite frankly. So, um, that's kind of where I stand.
I think the answer to your question on the right-of-way, evidently that's a road right-of-way, that's why they designed the, the whole street. It, to the point where they, they designed that street, if they would have drawn the other, it would have been like Jeff said, been sixty feet, and they would have come down sixty feet. It just looks different because they just have sixteen-foot of driveway.
And none of the neighbors have come in, I mean, it would be nice if a neighbor would come in to support it. Um, I know that neighbor was here who did not, uh, object, and the, i- is it an HOA? Okay.
Alright, well, no, just hang on a minute, we close it to public discussion, we're not gonna open it back up, we have a process, we're gonna follow the process. Charlie, you have anything to say?
I think it's due to the road, the way it is, and it's a dead-end road, I think there was testimony to that. I don't think it's an, a huge hindrance to the county to have that. Grant the variance that way, I think it's better for the neighborhood, better for the environment, everybody in general. I, I don't see it harming anybody, the one neighbor that was here, he said the house looked good, he was happy with where it was at, he owned the land across the street. I think the lot would have fit, I think it would, I mean, like, he's not gaining anything by putting it where he put it instead of where it should have been. I think he's trying to do it himself as, as best he can, and I think he still has a pretty tough road to go to get his finished floor raised to where he can get it, enough heartaches and trouble already.
I personally think that he has enough skill, knowledge in the construction business that he knew the house was not where it should be. That's my personal opinion, Jeff?
Well, and, in having this conversation, it, there is room on the lot to build a porch off to the side and create a new front door to the home with a new side entry porch that, um, does not require that front porch.
I don't think we give him any more than what he's asking for, and I sure don't, I think that it's a lot's better not have a porch than tear the house down. But we, we have got to start trying to get these people's attention, that, you know, you can't just go vertical when they know they have to have a concrete, I mean, if it wait in thirty days, whatever, but that's all I have to say.
Well, I would, I would be willing to amend my motion. To reduce that variance, since, since he could build a front porch off the side.
I think that's what you should do.
And that would probably give him a better chance of getting this variance. I'd like to amend my motion. To grant the variance of three point two feet to the front setback. Where the front porch could be built to the side and not on the front. And limit that to just the footprint of the house that's encroaching into the twenty-foot front setback.
You gonna amend the second?
I'll amend the second, or second the amendment.
Mr. Chris?
I don't know if there's a process for a reassessment of, you know, the right-of-way. There are questions about the shape of it and the reasons for it, I, I'm not qualified to question, uh, the right-of-way. It is what it is, so, um, that's, uh, if there is a process, I think that that would be valuable. Um, because perhaps it would show that this right-of-way, in fact, is, uh, excessive or erroneous.
Most of your county right-of-ways in the county is sixty-foot, some of those subdivisions back when they designed, designed them, I think it was back in the area where they wanted a sixty-foot right-of-way in case that road was ever set by the county who built county specifications. So the only way to amend that right-of-way is to ask county commissioners to abandon. They could abandon that portion of it, or they, but then you're getting into a whole different ballgame. But when you read, when you, you know, the, the code says if you have a county right, a county road, it has to meet county specification. And Jeff, I think I'm correct, it has to be sixty-foot right-of-way, and that's why the county requested sixty-foot back when this subdivision was done, back in the eighties.
Okay, so, so having heard that, then that right-of-way is, is, um, you know, it's there for a reason, and it's, um, it's, uh, it's, uh, written in, uh, stone, so to speak.
Boy, we could talk about right-of-ways, but let's not, I got something to say about right-of-ways there for this, go ahead.
I think I kind of agree with a little bit of what everyone said so far. I'm not gonna hold the knowledge of the industry against you, because I think restoration in new homes tends to be a little different. Um, but I think Jeff's amended motion is proper, and I think part of that goes to the consistency situation. Um, we have a similar situation, and we grant it pre-construction. I feel somewhat obligated to be a little more consistent post-construction. And I appreciate that he came in, asked for the variance himself, and I know that building a home is difficult. Um, it's really not that easy, and so, um, you know, I, I do think we need to address somehow the issue of why this keeps happening. Um, I agree with Chris earlier about how we go about stopping them from going vertical until we're gonna do the survey, because we're just gonna keep seeing this over and over and over again. Um, that being said, um, I think that I agree with the amended motion.
You done? Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
You receive your variance. That's once in a lifetime. Come up, come up for the, what's your question?
I, I appreciate it, and is that the variance to build a porch on the side?
Well, you don't need a variance to build the porch on the side.
I mean, is that the variance, including me building the porch on the side, or is that keeping it where it's?
So what I was saying is that, since you have plenty of space on the lot, you could add a porch off the side of your great room, that would be behind that twenty-foot setback.
Okay.
And allow you to enter into the house with a covered entryway, but it just doesn't increase the non-conformity on the front.
Yes, sir.
It's an option.
You can keep your slab too, I believe.
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
We have, uh, something tonight that has been discussed at, uh, Board of County Commissioners meeting the other night. Pardon me, you can stay or you could go. I was hoping that, uh, our attorney, Mr. Howard Dice, would be here tonight. I did speak with Mr. Rutherford in the discussion that we fixing to have. And I'm gonna ask Barbara to come up and, and explain what is going on, and I have some, I did talk to Clay Atkinson tonight prior to the meeting. Go ahead, Barbara.
Barbara Morano, I stood here before you in May because of my friend Mark Douglas filed a complaint with the Code Department. And his complaint was basically about a pole barn. I don't have that information in front of me, because you all made a great decision, you told the man to take down the pole barn. Well, um, Commissioner Glidewell likes to think that pole barns don't need any permits, and that.
And let's stick to the.
We'll stick to the issues, right.
That the fact is that we made a decision that it did not, we did not grant the variance.
Correct, however.
Code, and the code, you could pick up the code and let's leave the other stuff off.
Okay, so you made the right decision, and you said he would not have the variance, and the pole barn would need to come down. But somehow Code is fining this man, and his fines are up to thirty-six thousand dollars. I was not aware that my friend, Mr. Douglas, was still facing this problem. So we called Code to find out what's going on, and Code said, well, we, the case was closed. And they put it on the agenda, and they wanted to reduce the fines. Well, obviously, the case is not closed. And they called me up and Mr. Douglas, and they said, well, he needs a building permit now, he needs to put all his paperwork in order to pull the pole barn back to take care of his driveway, but the man is still working on the pole barn. So I asked the question, is, are his fines going to continue until he gets a certificate of completion? And they didn't know, they were gonna call me back. So I'm seeing that this man is still working on his pole barn, Code is still fining him, but if he puts a permit in, the fines might stop, so what's the motivation for him to continue? And I had a discussion with.
So how could he get a permit for a building that was denied the variance to be in the setback?
That's what Code has told me and Mark Douglas. So I'm coming here to ask, is there anything else?
Barbara, just, you have something to say?
Director and the BPR manager have been working with.
And Mr. Douglas is also here.
Johnny Sway. So in Mr. Boyd's case, with the building that was in the setback, built two foot from the setback line, and the board denied his variance request. There was a determination made, because he has two road frontages, as to the road frontage. So the road frontage would then come off of East Wilson, not off of Central Six. That made that roadway a twenty-foot setback, seven and a half on each side, which included the South Central Six, and then a fifteen-foot to the rear. The fifteen-foot to the rear was then alleviated because he bought that third lot and fused those lots together. So then the only setback that was in question was the Central Six roadside setback. So that is now a seven and a half foot setback, so he is required to remove at minimum five foot of that building to meet that seven and a half foot setback from that property line on that roadway.
When did this, uh, when did this occur?
This occurred, there was a magistrate meeting last week.
This occurred after, after our hearing, we, we did not grant the variance. So there was a magistrate hearing, and y'all determined this before the hearing?
This was a Code hearing that was scheduled for him, for his fines, from what I understand. Um, there was questions about, hey, what happened with his building permit for him to get out of Code Enforcement jeopardy, what happened with that? Stephen and I sat down, there was a director's determination on which roadway is considered the front.
Was that roadway changed from the time we heard it? From the time we heard the case, did the front road or whatever, did, did the determination of the, the variance request change by the planning director?
I will simply say I'm not aware, other than the board denied the variance, I don't know what was presented.
So the, it's state law that the shortest of the two road frontages would have the twenty-foot setback applied to it. So the side that the pole barn was encroaching into would only be a seven and a half foot setback.
So East Wilson is a hundred-foot length of roadway, and then with the three lots being joined, fused together, the hundred and twenty-five foot become Central Six, so that become the side.
There is a roadway that had a hole. Front was covered in concrete, what side is that?
That was on Central Six. That has been reduced from the width that he has built it, his requirement is down to ten foot.
So he is.
We'll have to remove that material from that right-of-way to the property line, to make it a ten-foot maximum width.
So when, when this board denied that variance, the planning department met with the, with the owner, and y'all agreed to these changes for him to come and comply?
Partly.
What you mean, partly?
He purchased the third lot to make that part of his property
Okay.
to alleviate the rear setback of fifteen feet.
Whenever, and that's a process, I, I agree with that, that's part of the correction. But whenever the fines was issued, my understanding there's a tremendous amount of fines, thirty-some thousand dollars. Is he gonna pay those fines?
I cannot answer that question, I don't have anything to do with Code Enforcement or their fines.
That was not in your agreement when you went before the magistrate?
I did not go before the magistrate.
Who went before the magistrate?
Code Enforcement.
Who, 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 the, 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 but y'all had this plan?
Not I, sir, I can't answer that.
May I say something?
Yes, please.
Um, I, I think this happens from time to time, I don't think this is a one-off. I think that sometimes things go to Code Enforcement, and they are closed, but they're not really closed, and they're not really addressed. And then it goes to planning, and things change. And it, I know it's happened to me in my neighborhood a number of times, that things have, for Code Enforcement, they were supposed to, they had overbuilt, and they were supposed to take down one of the buildings. It goes to planning, and planning lets them connect the buildings, or, you know, something else happens, so. This is not a one-off, I think this is a problem, and, and it's a difficult problem, because it's really not planning's fault, and it's really not Code Enforcement's fault, but the two are not connecting, and it's a problem.
Back in the day, whenever this board was a Code Enforcement Board, and whenever this board was a zoning board of adjustment, and there was a, a determination of not granting the variance, there was a court order for them to remove the structure. That seems not to happen, and I did speak with, uh, the attorney here tonight. Clay Atkinson promised me that he's gonna be here on the fifteenth to address this, because he informed me that our board is not the same as a Code Board, and we do not have that authority, but it concerns me greatly. Whenever we have a determination not granting variances, and there's a thirty-day process of the appeal, and then this thing seems to get lost, so give us your determination, what you think.
So I don't have a determination this evening, having learned about this a few minutes after I walked in, I have had a couple of minutes to sit here and look at it. Based on what you just said, Mr. Atkinson said, and he's gonna come and explain it, I think we are all likely to be in agreement as counsel that based on the existing code, the zoning board of adjustment does not have independent enforcement authority. Certainly, there may be different avenues, and I wouldn't be able to speak to those without further research, but for instance, filing suit would require litigation costs, which would require Board of County Commissioners approval, which, so it's good that Mr. Atkinson is being consulted. Based on the language of the code as it exists, that independent enforcement authority doesn't exist now.
For this board.
For this board.
Does, it says for the magistrate has that authority, and the county commissioners has that authority. The magistrate has the determination to either grant a, a fine, or he has the right to, to file for a motion to remove the structure, that's his determination, is that correct?
Based on what you're saying, yes, I would agree with you.
And we will have that explained to us on the fifteenth, and that's. I have a problem with our attorney being the attorney for this board, and also being the magistrate attorney. I think that is a conflict of interest, and I think we need our own attorney to represent this board. Even though we don't have authority, I still think we have the, I mean, look at our decision. Our decision is turned over by the appellate court, the, on, on the appeals court. But even though if we make a determination, we have no authority to make sure that it's carried out so that the citizens in the community is protected. So we have to take, I like to see it go back to the, to the zoning board, and the Code Board be, be one. And the magistrate, who knows, but that's my opinion.
And if, if, may I? I, and I, I do think this is not a one-off, and I think there needs to be better communication, and, um, finding a, a common ground between Code, Zoning Board of Adjustments, and Planning, where everybody's working together, and I've got a number of examples that I would love to share with the attorney.
Thing about it is, if they're gonna start making deals, they need to make the deal before it come to this board to correct these variances. Mark, go ahead and state your name for. Mark, go ahead and state your name for, did you swear? Did, were you sworn in?
I did. I said, I did swear in earlier. Um, I was a neighbor that called this complaint. I think I'm just so disturbed by the fact that a magistrate hearing was held and I didn't get any kind of notification for that. And what also is bothersome is the fines are up to thirty-five thousand dollars, two fifty a day, until he removes the building in the concrete. For there to be some kind of in-run after he's been denied by the Code Board and the zoning board is absolutely dirty all the way. He claimed under oath that moving the building was a financial burden. And then he turns around and buys the lot to the south side and that solves one of his setback problems, but and so, and suddenly gives him the right to have a, an oversized thirty-four foot driveway? That is a front yard. He lives, this is on a corner lot, this illegal building is. He's a, it's a double setback. There is no side.
There's not, that's not true.
There is no side, I mean, side setback. It is a front yard setback for all the other houses on that street.
Mr. Douglas, that's not factually true.
Right? But I can tell you, that's not legal. And y'all found it not legal. Why is it still there? He's still working on, he was working on it when we left. He puts security cameras, he has electricity. There's never been a site inspection. It creates a burden to the street. I have been the subject of death threats over and over. I have a wife that has neuropathy and can barely walk. She's unable to work. She's been out of, out of work since earlier this year. We live in a three-story house. She cannot get up and down the stairs. This man has threatened on more than several occasions to burn down our house.
Art, we're here to discuss the code. We're here to try to correct the issue. We're not here to take and rehash the testimony that was done before.
Part of the setback problem is this man has a platform to stand on the street and heckle me because of no setback. You know, I, I don't think giving him extra room on a setback when he's already been found in violation. My problem is, how many times do you go to the well and, and lose and you still get your way?
Art, we're here having discussion and we're here having understanding.
Well, I've called in another complaint from Code and to tell them he's continuing to work on the building. It generated another Code number. Apparently that went away because when I called to talk about it, it's gone. Then a magistrate hearing takes place. I just wanna say the process is messed up.
And we're here to discuss it and trying to bring a conclusion to this and correct that.
And look, I, I just.
People come back on the fifteenth of December and hear Mr. Atkinson.
All right.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Thank y'all for helping me and I thank you all for making the proper decision, uh, back in June. And, uh, if we'd have just done, if this instigator had done what he was supposed to do at that point,
They're in the process, Mark. They're in the process. We asked for discussion and we've had discussion. You keep it short.
I'm, I can save it for next time.
I think so. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we, uh, as the niece and I talked, so staff wasn't, this was a director's meeting. I will request that the director be here for the next meeting.
I think it's very important for him to be here. Matter of fact, we request him to be here on the sixteenth.
I will pass the message. He, he was, he's sick today, but.
And we also request that our attorney be here unless you want to be the permit attorney. And I have no problem with that because I think there's a conflict big time. So that'll work. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Do we need any motion as far as the minutes? Do we have any minutes here?
Motion to approve the minutes. They're in number five.
Second on the minutes?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any other discussion? Chris? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, yeah.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'll second it. Good.
County in the hurry, are you? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
What happened to our other deputy, sir? What happened to our other deputy? Did he get, he get?